Good evening, everyone. Would the meeting of the District 279 School Board please come to order? Today is Tuesday, April 17th, 2018, at 6:09 PM. Seated in front of you tonight, on my left, your right, is Director Stephanie Fortner, myself, Jim Burgett, Director Heather Douglas, Director Jessica Craig, and Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Kate McGuire. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members, in front of you tonight is the agenda as printed. Are there any additions to the agenda? Hearing none, I move to accept the agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seceded by Director Douglas, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The agenda has been approved. Now is when we would have an audience opportunity for comment, and we have no cards here. So at this point, we will close audience opportunity for comment, and we will move to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair. A regular part of the superintendent's report is to share points of pride. Points of pride celebrate students, staff, and community members who are contributing to the accomplishment of our mission, which is to inspire and prepare all students with the confidence, courage, and competence to achieve their dreams, contribute to community, and engage in a lifetime of learning. And I've asked cabinet members to share those points of pride tonight.
In the category of achieving dreams, Meredith Hawkinson from Maple Grove Senior High, Emily Shaleen from Osseo Senior High, and Megan Dubois from Park Center Senior High were named 2018 Athena Award winners in Osseo Area Schools. This award recognizes their outstanding athletic accomplishments. All three women will join winners from other area high schools at the 46th Annual Minneapolis Athena Awards Luncheon in May. Grove Area Percussion, the district's drum line team, made up of students from Maple Grove, Osseo, and Park Center Senior High Schools, had enough students for two competitive lines this year. Both lines performed at the state championship in early May. The PAC line earned first place at state, and the Wind Line placed fifth.
After a successful showing last year, Woodland Elementary 4th Grader Logan Foo once again earned a perfect score in the second meet of this year's Word Masters Challenge. Word Masters is a national vocabulary competition that involves 150,000 students each year. Foo is one of only 24 4th grade students nationally to achieve this result. The Park Center Senior High Model UN Team had a strong showing at the state conference this spring. Eleven students won awards for their position papers and general assembly delegations. Nancy Zimer, Park Center Social Studies Teacher and Coach of the school's Model UN Team, was recognized for her years of service with the Norma Rowe Teacher Award presented by the United Nations Association of Minnesota.
Several teams of elementary, middle, and high school students from Osseo Area Schools qualified to compete at the Minnesota State Destination Imagination Tournament this month. Teams represent Rush Creek, Brooklyn Middle, Maple Grove Middle, Osseo Middle, Maple Grove Senior, and Osseo Senior. Students competing in DI events work to come up with a creative solution to a problem by incorporating STEM, improvisation, visual arts, and performing arts skills. Hats off to the talented student artists who submitted posters for Osseo Area Schools 2018 Bus Safety Poster Contest. More than 175 entries were received. The 11 winning posters will now be judged against other entries from across the state. Earlier this month, the Maple Grove Government Center sponsored the District 279 Student Art Show. Artwork was on display to the public for two weeks. In this photo, Park Center Senior High Student Kaylee Fisher stands next to her art display with teacher Lori Taylor.
Joy Tia, a junior at Maple Grove Senior High, was featured as a CCX new standout student on April 11th. Joy, who moved to Minnesota from Liberia four years ago, is thriving as a student leader in her school and serves as a guide to new students. In her free time, Joy is also passionate about art and fashion. In the category of contributing to community, in March, all students at Cedar Island Elementary participated in a school-wide service project where they made fleece blankets for the Animal Humane Society and Secondhand Hounds. During the event, older students partnered with their younger peers to create 150 blankets for the organizations. Maple Grove Middle School 7th Grader Eve Miller is inspiring courage and kindness among her classmates. For the past several months, Eve raised money and teamed with Assistant Principal Sarah Luby Morris to bring Youth Frontiers Courage Retreat to her school in March. More than 500 students participated in the retreat and engaged in activities around the concepts of courage and kindness.
In the category of lifelong learning, students at Crestview Elementary and Zane Wood Community School participated in an Early World Art Day celebration on April 13th. From paintings to sculptures to chalk art, students' colorful creations adorned each school. Check out more photos from these events on our Facebook and Twitter pages. Thirteen students from Elm Creek Elementary, who produced the school's daily Elm Creek TV broadcast, toured Care11 Studios on April 6th. During their visit, students had the opportunity to talk with Care11 anchors and learn about the different jobs they do. Library media specialist Joan Magnussen led students on this trip.
More than 50 9th graders from Osseo Senior High were invited to perform onstage at Orchestra Hall in Minneapolis on April 2nd. The Osseo Orchestra was one of nine orchestras from across Minnesota to advance into Tier Two of the Minnesota Middle Level Orchestra Festival. The student-led Spirit Squad at Woodland Elementary recently hosted the school's first-ever art contest. More than 200 students submitted entries that were then displayed across an entire wall at the school. Six winners, one for each grade level, were chosen by the Spirit Squad.
Osseo Area Schools, in partnership with Brooklyn Center Community Schools, will host its 23rd Annual American Indian Education Day on Saturday, April 28th, from noon to 6:00 PM at Osseo Middle School. This free event features artisan exhibits, demonstrations, Native American dance, food, and more. Donza, the Indigenous Student Circle at Park Center Senior High, will also perform, and a special ceremony to honor local American Indian graduating seniors will be held. In the category of mission-driven employees, employees and community members in Osseo Area Schools presented the 51st Annual Waste Basket Review from April 11th through the 15th at Park Center Senior High. This year's theme was "It's a Wonderful Show" and featured skits, songs, and dances. This annual variety show raises money for graduating seniors in Osseo Area Schools. To date, Waste Basket Review has raised more than 1.23 million for 840 scholarships for students.
Dr. Bart Becker, Principal at Maple Grove Senior High, was named Best Principal by voters in the Osseo Maple Grove Press 2018 Reader's Choice Awards Competition. Voters also named Maple Grove Senior High as the best public school. Osseo Area Schools is excited to welcome three new elementary school principals for the 2018-2019 school year. Dr. Ronald Salazar will take over at Birch Grove Elementary School for the Arts. Robert Nelson is the new principal at Woodland Elementary, and Adrian Pendleton will serve the students and families of Zane Wood Community School.
Thank you. I have two items remaining. One is I just want to talk a little bit about our preparation for April 20th, which we think is scheduled for a national school walkout. Osseo Area Schools, like schools across the country, are preparing for the possibility that students may participate in a national school walkout day on April 20th to protest gun violence. This event is not sponsored or endorsed by Osseo Area Schools. It's a privately organized event that's taking place nationwide. Unlike the walkouts that occurred on March 14th, the April 20th walkout is planned as an all-day event. An all-day walkout poses complex challenges for schools. I did send a message to all of our parents last week urging them to have an intentional conversation with their student about attending school on April 20th. We encourage civic engagement by students and urge them to make their voices heard through communication with elected officials on matters of interest to them. However, we want students to be in school on school days, and they will be marked absent just as they ordinarily would if they missed school on any other day. Neither school staff nor the school district encourage, condone, or support any type of walkout. A nationwide walkout poses significant challenges related to the potential impact on the regular focus on teaching and learning that our students and families expect. Again, our sincere desire is that all students are attending school on April 20th, and I urge parents and guardians to have an intentional conversation with their student before this Thursday. And lastly, hot off the press, I want you to know that the National Association of Music Merchants Foundation has once again recognized Osseo Area Schools for its outstanding commitment to music education with a Best Communities for Music Education designation. This honor acknowledges efforts by teachers, administrators, parents, students, and community leaders who work together to ensure access to music learning for all students as part of the curriculum. Osseo is one of only eight districts in Minnesota to receive the honor this year and the only district in the state to have achieved this feat every year since 2009. I am super excited right now. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McGuire. Do we have a school board report for April 2nd, 2018, April 3rd, 2018, and April 10th, 2018?
Yes, and April 11th, 2018. The school board held four special meetings earlier this month as part of its search for a new superintendent. On April 2nd and 3rd, board members conducted first-round interviews of four finalists. Three candidates were advanced to the final round of interviews, but one withdrew from consideration prior to the final round. On April 10th, the board held final interviews with Dr. Eric Pruitt and Mr. James Harris. Later that same day, both finalists gave public presentations regarding why they should be selected as the next superintendent for Osseo Area Schools. Board members received significant feedback on each finalist's interview and public presentation, and members determined that they needed more time to consider feedback, received, and reflect on what they had heard in the interviews and presentations. On April 11th, board members reconvened to consider support for each finalist and determined next steps. Chair Ostaffy addressed that neither finalist had a strong level of support from the board overall, and his motion to stop the current search activity and pursue hiring an interim superintendent was approved. Vice Chair Burgett and Chair Ostaffy are now working with staff on a process for securing a leader for the interim position. Staff will continue to update the superintendent search section of the website as information about the selection of an interim becomes available. All four special meetings were open to the public and were video recorded. Members of the public can access the recordings on the district website. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other school board reports? Hearing none, we move on to our presentation from the District Planning Advisory Council, or DPEC.
Good evening, school board members, Superintendent McGuire, cabinet members, and members of the viewing audience. My name is Angie Fries, and I am the Director of Research Assessment and Accountability here with Osseo Area Schools. I am delighted to be here tonight with our DPEC Committee to share with you our work and recommendations for the 2018-19 school year. DPEC is an acronym for the District Planning Advisory Council, and this committee is made up of very dedicated members that meet on a regular basis and then conclude the school year with recommendations to the school board and superintendent for consideration. I have had the privilege of being able to work with this group in my capacity as the Director of RIA, and through this time, I've had the opportunity to work closely with Marty Cohen, Chair of the District Planning Advisory Council, and it is my sincere pleasure to introduce you to him at this time to begin our presentation this evening. Marty?
Thank you. Here's our clicker. School board members, cabinet members, teachers, administrators, parents, community members, and students, welcome. Tonight, we present the 2017-2018 Final Report for the District Planning Advisory Committee. Membership of the District Planning Advisory Committee includes parents, guardians, community members, high school students, teachers, district representatives, and school board members. Our goal is to have representation from every building in the district. The primary source of the members is word-of-mouth requests from buildings. We have tried many methods of recruiting new members so that we can have representation from the majority of the buildings. We currently have 15 of the buildings represented, and we are always looking for new members. If you are watching and are interested in our work, contact your local school principal, and they will direct you to the DPEC group. Students, we love our students. They have a voice, and it is good to hear their firsthand account of their experiences within the buildings. The community members and parents can only assume what is happening based on what their students say, but when a student's voice speaks up, we all hear it in a different and clear voice. DPEC exists because we are required by the state and also driven by school board policy. This is a terrific outlet to have district staff and community have conversations about ongoing activities that take place in our school district. The purpose of DPEC is to provide for the combined planning efforts of community and staff in curriculum planning and evaluating of the educational program. We meet a minimum of eight times a year and divide into subcommittees: Program Assessment and Review, Achievement and Evaluation, and Student Services. We also come together as a group to review and discuss the findings of our subcommittees. We have seen the impacts from past year's work, including but not limited to, changes in practices related to implementing new curriculum ventures. Last year's recommendation around math curriculum is a great example of this effort. For example, in the past, two buildings would have been chosen to pilot a program. This year, all 17 elementary buildings are represented in a math pilot that ranged from kindergarten through 5th grade and had over 70 elementary teachers trained, and they would be, and the teachers will be giving their feedback on the piloted curriculum. Last year's efforts included changing the demographics of buildings to reflect the community in which they work. Though work is still required for licensed staff, conversations persist on topics related to challenged buildings and what drives those buildings to be a challenge. We continue to be challenged with student behavior and how to address this. Creative means have come out of DPEC conversations and are seen in the buildings. Restorative practices and trauma-informed practices have also been a win for recommendations that the DPEC process has been a part of. The purpose of the DPEC group is to assure community and school cooperation in setting improvement goals, evaluating progress toward meeting annual objectives, and reporting findings and recommendations to the entire school community. Tonight, you will hear from three subcommittee groups: Program Assessment and Review, Achievement and Evaluation, and Student Services. I have the honor of representing the Program Assessment and Review Subcommittee. We are gathered, when we gather early in the year, we discuss many topics. Two rose to the top that we felt needed some attention. We started out having discussions about grading practices and policies. We heard from our students the frustration they were having with inconsistent messages from teacher to teacher and grade to grade. Because we represent multiple buildings, it also dawned on us that practices differed based on building and curriculum focus. We reviewed school board policies and internal documents to try and get a clearer understanding of the message surrounding standards-based grading. We understand the concept and applaud the vision, but with most teachers and parents having not lived under such a program and many retirements and new staff, we felt it was time for review of practices and policies. We heard stories of teachers that would allow retakes but then not allow full credit on the retake, teachers that would not allow a retake if you got above a certain grade, and the stories went on. We invited four seasoned instructional staff with multiple years of experience and also four first- and second-year teachers to discuss with us their experiences. One parent put it this way: "In your job, you will not get fired for doing a poor job, but likely you will be sent back to do it again until it is right." This is part of the purpose of standards-based grading. Our goal as a teaching institution is to allow our students to thrive and learn, and if that takes repeat efforts, so be it. If it takes two, three, or four times to perfect the process, but it is learned well, then it was worth it." Which brings us to recommendation number one. We recommend that the district clarify practices and policies around standards-based grading to ensure their guidelines are clear, articulate, actionable, such that student teachers and families have a shared understanding, documented practices and procedures are created, the aforementioned documents address differences across content areas, and consistent district-wide application is promoted. We felt it was important for these documents to be accessible by all students, parents and staff, to be written in such a manner that they would be easily understandable, for instance, at an 8th grade reading level. We also felt it was important for site administrators to be part of the solution to review syllabuses to make sure that the message is clear. The focus is education and learning. Over the years, we have discussed concerns related to turnover in district staff. We wanted to discuss issues related to teachers moving from Building A to Building B. We wanted to understand better how a building could have many staff with less than five years of experience, and another building could have mostly seasoned staff. We reviewed other district mentoring programs. We were curious as to what was and was not working. As I mentioned, we had an opportunity to review with seasoned staff and recent first- and second-year staff to gain a clear understanding around job training. Most instructors get their on-job experience while they are interning. When they get a job with the district, they're handed a classroom, a first-week seminar before the school year starts, and a nod: "Good luck." So what did we learn? We learned that mentoring is sometimes available and other times not. We found that new teachers needed to know things like how to find and use a coffee machine. We found that some teachers are more outgoing than others. We know that burnout happens quickly or not at all. That teacher turnover is highest in the first few years. We found that those teachers that were the happiest had someone in their court helping them and would likely last a lot longer than when left to themselves. We found that in this district, we do not have a teacher mentoring program, which leads us to recommendation number two. We recommend that the district establish and implement a teacher mentoring program for new teachers entering the district. We reviewed several local districts that have mentoring programs already in place and felt this was a good starting place for a mentoring program. New teachers include those fresh out of college or those who are simply new to the district. The need to learn the District 279 mission and culture. New teachers in general have concerns, and principals and assistant principals may not be the right person to help a new teacher. Remember, these are the same folks that determine if a person is doing well or not, so asking them too many questions might lead to the wrong impression. If a teacher can be served well by a seasoned teacher, they can introduce them to systems that are in place as well as guide them through challenging experiences. And I would like to introduce the next group, Achievement and Evaluation, with Xena Abdu.
I am Xena Abdo, and I am a senior at Park Center Senior High School. The first recommendation of the Achievement and Evaluation Subcommittee is that we recommend that districts convene survey-focused groups for students, families, and teachers. So we feel that it is important to communicate with students, families, and teachers about why their feedback on district-issued surveys is essential. This would allow for more participation in the surveys and for more honest answers. They need to know that the surveys are used to better the students' learning experience in the classroom and in the building. We know that building strong relationships between teachers and students will raise expectation levels for every student to achieve their best academic performance. And the surveys give people the opportunity to voice how they feel about what is going on in their building. So because of this, the district will be able to take more appropriate actions in order to fit the needs of more students, teachers, and parents. The second recommendation is to expand college and career readiness opportunities for students at the secondary level. Students who already take advantage of the college and career readiness centers in their schools feel more prepared for what they want to do after graduation. And we want to see all of our students succeed and achieve their dreams, whatever that may be. Therefore, we feel that it is important for students to be aware of what the college and career readiness centers in their schools could provide for them. And next, you will hear from Brian, who will share more about the work of the Student Services Committee.
My name is Amanda Engelman, and I go to Park Center Senior High. I represent Student Services Subcommittee, and I'll give it to Brian.
My name is Brian LaRose. I'm a parent in the district. I have a child at Osseo Middle and at Woodland Elementary. This year's Student Services Subcommittee explored the opportunities for ESPs in the district, including the experiences that ESPs have, their onboarding and training, along with the need for consistent practices across all buildings. We talked to several people about their experiences, and we also sent a survey to all 850 of the ESPs in the district, and we got 100 responses back. Using that information, we built our recommendations. Much like the Program Assessment and Review Committee, we are recommending that the district develop a consistent onboarding and training process for ESPs in the district so all new ESPs have the same quality training, no matter what building they are in. Current ESPs should also get this training so all have the same knowledge. This training should include behavioral interventions such as de-escalation, crisis prevention and intervention, trauma-informed practices, and restorative practices.
For our second recommendation, we also recommend that continuing education and ongoing training is required for ESPs specific to district priority work. For example, reading intervention, cultural responsiveness, behavior management, and et cetera.
And finally, while our recommendations from last year on restorative practices and trauma-informed practices have become embedded within district priority work, we would like to emphasize the need to include ESPs and other non-licensed staff, including bus drivers, custodians, cafeteria staff, as they all interact with our students. Thank you.
I'd like to thank you again for the opportunity to present to you tonight the DPEC presentation. If you have any questions, we will be happy to address. And remember, audience members, people that are here local, people that are watching, whether you're streaming or however you're watching, if you're interested in the work of DPEC, please contact your local principals, and they will be happy to get you in touch with DPEC group. Thank you.
Well, I'd like to thank, Marty, I'd like to thank you and the DPEC team for all the work you've done throughout the whole year. This is very important work that helps guide us as we move forward, help us choose our priority work. And so I just want to thank you very much. School board members, any questions?
Mr. Vice Chair? I'd also like to express my thanks. We really do rely on these recommendations, and as you dive deeper into these content areas, it's helpful, especially around standards-based grading and just kind of the gaps that exist that we're not aware of as a board, so thank you so much for that.
Thank you. Sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. I just wanted to echo what Jessica said. I did not make it to very many meetings this year, but I know you guys worked really hard, and again, you really, really went deep, and your recommendations were very clear and concise and really beneficial for us to consider as we move into our priority work. So thank you very much to the whole team.
I'll echo everybody's thoughts, and thank you guys for taking time out of your busy lives and schedules to form this work for us to help us make our decisions. So thank all of you.
I do have a couple of specific questions. You talked about professional development for ESPs- You talked about professional development for ESPs in the Student Services Committee, and I was wondering, all three of the recommendations talked about training. So I'm wondering if you could help us learn about what are the differences between the three recommendations?
So the differences between the three recommendations, the last one is to continue the priority work from last year, but make sure it's extended to all staff that have interaction with their students, which is pretty much everybody. The first recommendation, what we heard from a lot of the ESPs and from the union reps that we had in was that there's not any kind of consistent training, even within a building, for the ESPs, much less across buildings. So you can come into a building, and you may not know where the copy room is, much less anything else. And it's kind of embarrassing to ask that, as Marty mentioned. You know, you ask somebody, and now you look like the fool or something. But they're also coming in not knowing how to take care of de-escalation incidents, how to take care of cultural sensitivity problems, that they should be, that they're going to be the ones that have to interact with the students the closest with. So the first recommendation is talking about making sure that, making sure that all of that training, everything is happening consistently everywhere for all groups, all levels, and making sure that it includes the really important pieces of work of crisis prevention and intervention, trauma-informed practices, restorative practices, which are key things in your priority work as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. I had one other question about standards-based grading.
Go ahead.
This is something that we'd implemented a while ago, and it continues to be very important to us, and I know that you've refocused on it again this year. So could you talk a little bit more about what are some of the strengths about our current standards-based practices, and why it's so important we continue this?
Standard-based grading, as I understand it, and I'm a parent, so I'm not living in the experience, is the idea that we want children to learn. We want students to learn. We want them, and just like a job experience, if you are a machinist and you go make something and you make it wrong, you're not going to be fired on the spot. You're not going to get an F and say, okay, well, you did that, move on to the next task. You're going to be sent back to revisit. You're going to be asked to revisit the work and figure out how it's done. You're going to be mentored, you're going to be challenged, you're going to learn. And that might mean learning from your peers, learning from your instructors, learning from your supervisors. Standards-based grading is the same idea. So we're asking students and teachers to focus in on the learning and not focus as much on the grade. And I was just going to add to the previous question. When it comes to mentoring, we reviewed multiple mentoring packages from other districts. And what we found was, once you're hired into our district, while there is some level of mentoring where, you know, you're hired into a building and you're told, well, if you have any problems or questions, go speak to the administrator of the building, there wasn't much focus put on, while you're in second grade, go talk to the other second-grade teachers, or you're in the science department, go talk to the other science teachers. It was kind of hit or miss on how that worked. And what we're asking for is a structured process that maybe it's a once a week, once a month, some sort of process that allowed new people to learn the ropes of the system that includes the stuff that happens in week one. So week one, how many things are thrown at you on day one, job one, week one, eight hours, five days a week for that first week of, here's how you do grading, and here's how you put in time, and here's how you do this? And there's a lot. You know, I can only imagine what a teacher goes through during that first week of, oh, I have a new classroom, and it's my new job, and what are all these systems that I'm supposed to look at? And so we're suggesting that during that first year, there be a structured process. There be a document. There be actual people that they can talk to that are in the same boat that they can work with. And then year one, people can talk to each other and find out what's working, what's not, and become better, better staff because they've got the support that they need. So you asked the question, how are these different? They came out of different groups, and during the process, these two groups didn't talk to each other. They came up with these two concerns separately, but they did end up being very similar in nature.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Any other last-minute questions? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Now we move on to item eight, the Consent Agenda. Are there any items that board members would like to remove from the consent agenda for separate consideration? Hearing none, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. And the motion passes. Now we move on to action items. I believe Patricia Magnuson is going to start. Okay, thank you.
Can I have a resolution relating to the refunding of our bonds during, this will be issued 2018 A. We have Joe Zesba seeking support and financing with average of 10%. We will take this to our bid results today, which should be very pleased about.
Absolutely. Thank you, Patricia. So you should have a sale day report that you received, hot off the press after we got the bids this morning. And if you'll turn to the inside front cover, I'll just go through some of the information related to the refunding bond sale. So a refunding bond sale is similar to refinancing your home mortgage, but you're not able to keep the savings for your budget. You do need to pass that savings on to taxpayers in the form of lower property tax levies in the future. So just know that that is a difference. We're issuing these bonds for tax savings, and that will get passed on to your taxpayers in the future. You'll notice, then, that there were two ratings assigned. The Minnesota State Credit Enhancement Rating is a program that we recommend that you participate in. It's free of charge, and you get a nice high rating, a double A2 rating, which gives the investors a lot of security in your bonds. Your underlying rating, however, is even higher than the rating that you get through the state credit enhancement program at a double A1. There are a little bit over 140 school districts that have Moody's rating. Three have the highest rating at triple A, and that, those districts are Edina, Minnetonka, and Wayzata. There are only three in your category. So there used to be more, and they've received some downgrades over the year. You still have that really nice high rating, along with Minneapolis School District and Rosemont Apple Valley Egan. So you're in really good company, and there are not very many districts that have this high rating. I wanted to also let you know that Patricia and Kelly Benusa from your finance department participated in a rating call on April 5th with Moody's and represented your district very well. Without their expertise and leadership, certainly you would not be able to maintain this nice high rating. So thank you to them for all of their efforts and all the help they provided as part of that process. We did receive eight bids today. We like to see three, so eight. We were thrilled to see all of those come into our office. The low bidder was RBC Capital Markets. You'll see their low bid is a 1.88%, which is fantastic. The high bid was just a little bit over 2%. The results are summarized in the chart there, but just to point out, the savings that we had projected, when we talked to you last month, were about $362,000. We actually are getting over $385,000. So that's fantastic news. We will close on these bonds May 10th. They're considered current refunding bonds because we're closing within 90 days of the call date. The call date is August 1st of 2018. So as Patricia mentioned, there's a resolution that's been prepared by your bond attorney, Andrea Hedke from Dorsey &amp; Whitney. And I will just walk through the attachments. Many of them are just updates to the attachments that we provided at the last meeting. So the first, the first attachment is the bid tab, which goes on for two pages because you received so many bids. So you'll see RBC Capital Markets as the lowest bidder with their true interest rate on the far right-hand side at 1.88%. The next lowest bidder was JP Morgan, also out of New York, at a 1.8996, so really tight bidding. And then after that, you've got bids from Memphis, Tennessee, another from New York, Denver, Colorado, Minneapolis again, New York, and Milwaukee. So great to see all of that interest in your bonds today, and we're really pleased with the results that we got. On page three, then, this is an update to the schedule that my colleague Joel Sutter discussed with you last month. So you'll see the results now in terms of the sources and uses of funds related to this financing transaction. Page four, there is absolutely no change to the schedule because this is the existing debt and the amounts that you're committed to right now prior to the refunding. Page five is the new debt schedule that you will be paying from going forward, and you'll see on that page the true interest cost and the yield statistics near the bottom of that section there at the 1.89%, roughly 1.88. And again, we were estimating 1.97, so nice to see that come in lower than we expected. Our favorite page, page six, which shows the savings to your taxpayers now. You've already levied for the debt service payment that's going to occur on February 1st of 2019. You're collecting those taxes from your taxpayers now in calendar 2018. So we did not attribute any savings to that payment. So the following two levies, so your levy for taxes payable in '19, and then the following year in 2020, will have a reduction of about $200,000 in each of those years. So really happy to be able to share those results with you. We did include page seven. Because this is a fairly substantial amount in terms of the refunding, you'll be able to deposit the funds when we close on May 10th and earn some interest on those funds until the bonds need to be called on August 1st. So you'll see that interest column, we're estimating about $50,000 in interest earnings. The finance department felt comfortable with that assumption. And the most important thing is that you'll have that amount shown in the receipts and disbursements column. The $13,560,000 is exactly what you need to call those bonds on August 1st. So we just want to make sure the funds will be sufficient between the refunding bonds and the interest that you'll earn on those bonds between the time of closing and when you need to call the bonds. Page eight is the start of two documents that were issued by Moody's after the results of their review. So the first document is a press release. I will refer you to some of the information at the beginning there, where they're talking about assigning your nice high double A1 underlying rating, and then the double A2 credit-enhanced rating. And in the ratings rationale, they talk about the district's large and growing tax base in the Twin Cities metro area, strong financial position supported by stable enrollment trends, moderate debt burden, and elevated pension burden. Every school district in the state of Minnesota right now is getting that comment about the elevated debt burden due to TRA plan, and hopefully the legislature is going to take some action on that and provide you with some funding to offset some increased contributions with respect to that plan. So, and then the double A2 enhanced program is explained there. There's some factors that they talk about that could lead to an upgrade, factors that could lead to a downgrade, and then just a little bit more information, some boilerplate information on a few pages. And then the second document that they published is on page 13, and this is their credit opinion. So this provides a lot of summary information, similar to what was in the press release, but then goes into some more detailed information. So page 13, a lot of that information is repetitious from the press release, but if you'll continue on to page, the attachments, page 14, you'll see a chart that summarizes some key indicators that they looked at and discussed as part of their process, detailed credit considerations, information about your finances, economy, all those kinds of things that they were basing your credit rating on. So that is what we have for you. We certainly thank you for the opportunity to be of service to you. We appreciate our relationship with you and the ability to work with you on these financial transactions. Since we might not be here over the next couple of months, we also want to take the opportunity on behalf of Lers to thank Dr. Kate McGuire. We've really enjoyed our partnership with her. For those of us who have worked in education and now still partnering with people in education, she's been a great role model to many, many, many of us, and we know that your community has benefited greatly from her leadership. So thank you for your partnership over the years and for being such a great role model for all of us.
Thank you, Jody.
And I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Board members, any questions?
I would just like to say thank you for saving us taxpayers some money. That's always great news to hear, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Absolutely. $385,000, if anybody's counting. I'd also like to thank Patricia Magnuson and the finance department, Abdu's in the group, for keeping vigilant as these interest rates move and taking advantage in order to save our taxpayers money. Thank you so much.
All right. And do they take action?
Yes.
No?
Okay.
You have a motion?
I move to approve the resolution relating to $13,640,000 general obligation school building refunding bond, Series 2018A, authorizing the issuance, awarding the sale, prescribing the form and details, and providing for the payment thereof. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries.
Great. Thank you again.
Thank you. The next action item is a recommendation for approval agreement on the terms and conditions of employment between the Independent School District 279 School Board and Management I Through M, July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2019. Judy McDonald.
Thank you, and good night, Vice Chair Burgett. School board members and Superintendent McGuire. On the agenda this evening is for school board action is the employee group contract for management personnel I Through M. School board members have had the opportunity to review the proposed changes to the provisions contained in the terms and conditions, to ask questions, dialogue about the new provisions, and to consider the financial implications. And the final step now is for school board members to give consideration for formal approval. Our I Through M management personnel group consists of 64 employees who serve in a variety of management positions throughout our system. Their operational leadership provides a critical support to our system and movement toward our mission. This contract expired on June 30th, 2017, and the new contract will be in effect beginning July 1st, 2017, through June 30th, 2019. The agreement contains some language changes that reflect current district practices. In addition, changes have been made to the group insurance, compensation, salary advancement, probation, and regular employment status, and leave sections of the collective bargaining agreement. In the compensation section of the collective bargaining agreement, a 2% increase to base salary has been applied, along with a 4% increase to the minimum and maximum in the salary range. The increases are effective July 1st, 2018. That's the second year of the contract. The salary investment is consistent with the financial parameters established by the school board for the 2017-19 contract negotiations period. The two-year agreement results in a 6.69 total package increase, and the total financial investment is $589,767 over the term of the agreement, and it's the superintendent's recommendation that you approve this new group contract.
Thank you. I move to approve the agreement on the terms and conditions of employment between the Independent School District 279 School Board and Management I Through M Personnel, July 2nd, 2017 through June 30th, 2019. Do I have a second?
Second.
School board members, any comment? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. And the motion passes. Next item is a recommendation for approval, 2018-2019 medical insurance plan and rates renewal. Judy McDonald.
Thank you, Vice Chair Burgett. School board members have had the opportunity to review our medical insurance renewal rates for 2018 and 2019. The final step now is for school board members to take action on the formal approval. Our insurance plan covers 461 benefits eligible employees, including our management groups and support staff groups not enrolled in the public employers' insurance program, also known as PEAP. We're recommending an overall 2.34% increase to monthly premiums. The increase in premium will continue to help us build the necessary fund reserves to support a healthy self-funded plan, and it requires a small but manageable increase for our employees and employer contributions. The 2.34% increase is within district budget projections, and it's the superintendent's recommendation that you approve the group insurance renewal rates effective July 1st, 2018.
Thank you. I move to approve the 2018-2019 medical insurance plan and rates renewal. Do I have a second?
Second.
School board members, any comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The motion carries. Now we have several items relating to policies, 413, 548, 420, and 547. I believe we're going to take these, discuss them all at one time. Counsel Tim Palmetier.
Thank you, Vice Chair Burgett, school board members, and Dr. McGuire. The following policies are action items on tonight's agenda. First is amendment to policy 413, prohibition against discrimination, harassment, and violence. The amended policy and procedures are required under state and federal law. The revised policy combines current policy 413 The revised policy combines current policy 413 concerning employee-related harassment and 548 that concerns student-related harassment. The amended policy has been revised to prohibit both harassment and discrimination based upon a student or employee's protected status under the Minnesota Human Rights Act. The proposed policy and procedures were also revised to ensure compliance with specific due process requirements required by the Office of Civil Rights from the U.S. Department of Education. Specifically, the proposed policies and procedures enhance reporting procedures, investigation procedures, notification requirements, and appeal procedures. Next for second read is repeal of policy 548, student-based harassment and violence. This policy is being proposed for repeal based upon its incorporation into policy 413, as I just discussed. Next for consideration for the board will be amendment to policy 420, students and employees with communicable diseases and infectious diseases. This policy is not required by state or federal law. However, the district has maintained a policy with respect to communicable diseases for both students and employees since 1999. Given the potential risks posed by communicable diseases and certain reporting obligations imposed by the state and also federal regulations, the policy committee proposed maintaining and updating the policy. The proposed policy requires adoption of practices to prevent the spread of infection and address privacy and information sharing concerns related to affected persons. And finally, the policy incorporates a requirement of Minnesota law requiring the implementation of programs that help prevent the spread of sexually transmitted diseases. Also before the board on second read tonight is repeal of policy 547 on communicable diseases. This policy is being proposed for repeal based upon its incorporation into policy 420, as I just indicated. And finally, amendment to policy 423, employee-student relationships. This policy is not required by state or federal law. The amended policy is being proposed for revision to address employee-to-student interactions that might not otherwise be addressed under the harassment policy. Specifically, the proposed policy would clarify that employees should not intimidate, berate, or shame students for sincerely held beliefs. The proposed policy also clarifies that familial relationships of a certain nature may create some exceptions to the overall policy. The first reading of all of the aforementioned policies occurred at the regular school board meeting on March 20th, 2018. At least four weeks have passed since the first reading of these policies. And under the school district bylaws, if any of these policies are approved by the board this evening, they will be amended and implemented.
Thank you. Mr. Palmetier. I just have a question on the motions here that we have listed. It has in parentheses that it says repeal, but I should really move to repeal the policy. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. So, we're going to take these one by one. The first one, I move to approve the second reading of policy 413, prohibition against discrimination, harassment, and violence. Do I have a second?
Second.
The motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The motion passes. I also have a motion to approve or to repeal policy 548, students' harassment and violence, since it is incorporated in policy 513. Do I have a second?
Second.
The motion and a second. Any comments?
Just a point of clarification, you said policy 513 and it's policy 413.
Thank you very much. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. I move to approve the second reading of policy 420, students and employees with communicable diseases and infectious conditions. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The motion passes. I move to repeal policy 547, communicable diseases. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. I also have a motion to approve the second reading of policy 423, employee-student relationships. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any comments, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Our last motion is to approve the gifts to the district totaling $127,020 and $0.20 -- excuse me, $127,020 and $0.30. I can do this. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any comments other than thank you very much, community? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion carries. And Director Fortner, would you read the announcements, please?
Absolutely. Number one, a school board special meeting will be held in accordance with Minnesota statute, Section 13D.05 subdivision 3, in order to develop or consider offers or counteroffers for the purchase or sale of real properties on Tuesday, April 17th, this evening at 7:00 PM in Room N10 at the ESC. This meeting will be closed to the public. A school board special meeting will be held on Tuesday, April 24th, 2018, at 6:00 PM in the forum room at the ESC. The topic will be the board vacancy appointment. This meeting is open to the public. A school board work session will be held on Tuesday, May 1st, 2018, at 6:00 PM at Park Brook Elementary School. The topic will be world's best workforce strategic plan, priority goal updates, customer service, positive behavior intervention, family engagement, pre-K, recruitment, and retention. This meeting is also open to the public. A school board work session will be held on Tuesday, May 8th, at 6:00 PM in the boardroom at the ESC. The topic will be enrollment and capacity update. This meeting is open to the public. A school board regular meeting will be held on Tuesday, May 15th, at 6:00 PM in the boardroom at the ESC. This meeting will be open to the public. A negotiation strategies meeting will be held on Tuesday, May 15th, at 7:00 PM in Room N10 at the ESC. This meeting will be closed to the public. And a school board policy committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, May 22nd, at 6:00 PM in the forum room at the ESC. This meeting will be open to the public.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I move to adjourn this meeting at 7:10 PM. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? And the motion carries. We are adjourned.